Please rise to salute the flag. Apologies allegiance to the flag, United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Clerk will read the roll.
Counselor Vido.
(inaudible).
Here, right here. I'm sorry, no, this is not, sorry.
Counselor President.
Present.
Counselor Cooper. Counselor Garcia.
Present.
Counselor Vega Maldonado. Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Counselor Rodriguez. Counselor Taylor.
Here.
Counselor Lopez.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
And Counselor Zabit.
Present.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Nine members present.
Nine members present. We'll now move on to memoriam and celebratory resolutions. We have a resolution introduced by Counselor Vega Maldonado and Counselor Naomi Zabit, which reads, Autism Awareness, Acceptance and Empowerment Resolution, dedicated for gifted individuals like Achilles Maldonado Vega. Whereas recognizing April as a National Autism Awareness Month in the United States in the 1970s to draw attention to the challenges faced by the community of individuals with autism, whereas April 2nd is observed internationally as World Autism Awareness Day. And whereas autism is a developmental disorder typically diagnosed during the first three years of life, greatly impacting individuals of their ability to communicate and interact with others. And whereas the Center for Disease Control and Prevention's National Health Statistics report conclude, the prevalence of autism spectrum disorder has risen to one in every 54 children in the United States. And whereas autism is reported to occur in all racial, ethnic and socioeconomic groups, but it's four times more common among boys than among girls. And whereas there is no cure for autism. And whereas participation in observance of National Autism Awareness Month helps to promote awareness through education on the needs of this community. And whereas autistic individuals face difficulties in their workplace due to the lack of assistability and resources for their needs, therefore be it resolved that the city of Chelsea hereby one celebrates National Autism Awareness Month from April 1st to April 30th, 2021, and April 2nd is Autism Awareness Day. Two, recognize and commend the family members of children with autism for their sacrifices and dedication in providing the support for the special needs of children with autism. Three, emphasizes and raises the awareness of the early intervention services to begin soon after the child is diagnosed with autism in an effort to improve the potential outcomes for people with autism. Four, acknowledges, empowers and supports autistic city employees through resources and necessary accommodations. Five, acknowledges, empowers and supports the teachers, paraprofessionals and other educators who possess the desire, caring and skills necessary to teach, assist and respond to students with special needs, including those with autism, and who work tirelessly to educate and provide high-quality programming for students with special needs enrolled in the Chelsea Public District School District, adopted on the 5th day of April, 2021. What is the wish of the council? Counselor Vega Maldonado.
I would...
Accept...
Accept and file.
Accept on the suspension?
(inaudible).
You may.
You can take yours too. Tonight, as I sit here with my son.
With my son, I had...
You want to introduce yourself? What is your name?
My name's Achilles.
How old are you?
Mommy, do yours right there. It's actually going right now.
Okay. Tonight, we are making history in Chelsea, as this is the first ever celebratory resolution for autism awareness and acceptance and empowerment. This is also very personal and a heartfelt moment. Hold on. For me, as I am a mother of two boys, one of which is diagnosed with autism, I would like to introduce you to Achilles, my four-year-old boy.
Mommy, do yours right there.
Who has autism and wants the mic. Give me a second, Achilles.
My, do it.
Okay. Achilles was diagnosed with autism before the age of two. He was non-verbal with severe hearing sensory issues. As his mother, I know where. As his mother, I know the hardships of feeling perplexed.
Let me tell this.
Hold on. Daddy to the rescue. Go with daddy for a second, okay? Sorry, thank you. As his mother, I know the hardships of feeling perplexed in what our life was going to be like. Was he ever going to speak? Is he going to be bullied? What can I do? I advocated for him to get a diagnosis early on to ensure he receives the resources necessary to support him since autism has no cure. I remember when celebrating his birthdays, I had to give full disclaimers prior to and ask people to whisper while singing "Happy Birthday" and not say "ye" or clap at the end. Instead, snap because loud noises bothered him tremendously. Now, as Achilles demonstrated, he won't stop talking. He loves learning and teaching about the solar system and the climate. He wants to be an astronaut, a doctor, a police officer, HF, a meteorologist and a dentist. Having a child with autism is a part of our life. It doesn't define him or us. It gives us moments for learning new things about understanding how to communicate with him and support him. Fortunately, there are plenty of resources out there to support us through this journey, which is why I'm sharing our story. There are so many stigmas around autism, but I love unconditionally and I love being a mother, a proud mother of an autism warrior like my Achilles.
We'll ask if Counselor Zabit had some words also. Counselor Zabit?
As an educator of children and adults with autism, as well as not a mother, but probably the closest thing to being a mother because of the time that I spend with the children and the love that I feel for them and the love that I get back. This is really very, very close to my heart and I'm so delighted to be sharing it with Melinda and the family. And I just would like to mention one point that I think is so important to be aware of is that in our society, because there is a prevalence of people with autism at all different levels, that somebody can have autism and you might not realize it. So just as with anyone, don't ever judge a book by its cover. Don't judge a person because that person looks as though they're having a perfectly easy and typical way of moving through life. So that if that person does something unexpected, that you try to find it within yourself to have that sensitivity and understand that perhaps that person has a lot more going on than you realize. And that goes for anything and anybody, but particularly when we're talking about something like this, because it is, it's basically an invisible diagnosis of something. So I really, really appreciate being included on this resolution and it's just delightful that you have your son here with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Brown?
Good evening, Mr. President. I just wanted to congratulate Counselor Vega Maldonado and Counselor Zabit for bringing this together. This is something, it just brings tears to my heart, silent tears, to realize that this has been going on for so long and this is the first time that we ever recognized that, this Autism Week. Autism does speak. I mean, you heard the young man when he was up there, he has a lot of life, he has a lot of energy and it tells us that he's able to do a lot of great things. But this is a time that we celebrate friends, family members, just have children to deal with it every single day. We give them our love, our support. It's also an opportunity that we have to realize that not only celebrate autism, but we also have to realize that there are some researchers that we have to support and try to get the resources just needed to help these kids at an early age. I have a very young, a very young girl in the building that I live in and she's about seven years old. And when she goes to school on the first day of school, she has everything written out, what she's going to do, who she's going to be, what the day is and the dates, and I'm like, wow, I can't even put that together in my weekly schedule. But they're very energetic, they're very great thinkers, they have a lot to say. We need to just embrace them and continue to realize that, you know what, if you don't know about it, there's a big website, it's called Autism Speak, you can get to know about it, and it's really a great thing to have it today. And I just really thank the both of you for bringing it to us and continue, for those folks that don't know about it, know that Autism Speak and you can pick it up on any website or on any phone and find out more about it. Thank you.
If there's no objection, I'd like to speak from the chair. I want to thank both of my colleagues for bringing this up. It's true that it's the first time that this subject has been brought up, but not a subject matter that is unknown to this community. I would be remiss if we didn't recognize the great work that our school department has done, both Mary Burke and now Almy, with, you know, with the kids in our community and the efforts that they make in trying to deal with this. And of course, knowing Melinda firsthand and many other mothers in this community, I know how hard it is to see them try to take this effort to take care of a child like this, the extra effort they have to put in. And I want to just commend them also, because I know it's a struggle. But I thank you again for bringing this up and to Counselor Zabit, thank you. Seeing no others, we'll now take a brief recess to allow for Melinda to please present it to your son and your family members here. Okay, so, moving on, we'll move on to the public hearing portion. We will have a public hearing regarding the proposed home rule petition on imposing a local sales tax upon or transfer of the road salt or related products by a taxpayer with salt storage operations within the city of Chelsea at a rate of not greater than 1% of the total sales price received by the taxpayer in consideration for the sale of road salt. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, that portion of the meeting is now closed. Counselor Robinson?
On behalf of the President, I'd like to take from unfinished business, if there's no objections, the home rule petition and the President would like to withdraw the petition if there are no objections.
Seeing no objection, that motion is now withdrawn. We'll now move on to the public speaking portion of our meeting. If there's anyone here who would like to speak to the city council on any matter, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address. You will have four minutes. Seeing none, we'll now move on to the approval of the minutes. Approval of the regular meeting minutes of March 22nd, 2021. Here's our motion. Counselor Lopez.
(inaudible) there are no objections.
The Counselor Lopez asks that we adopt under suspension the approval of the minutes. We now have communications from the city manager.
First communication from the city manager, appointments to boards and commissions. Pursuant to Section 4-2 of the charter of the city of Chelsea, I'm writing a recommended following individuals to boards and commissions in the city. Reappointment to the Community Schools Advisory Board, Ms. Vanessa Mendoza Mercado, 318 Chestnut Street, Chelsea, for a three-year term. For appointment to the council on elder affairs, Mr. Anthony Bon Giovanni, 46 Cahuli Road, Chelsea, for a new three-year term. For reappointment to the cultural council, Ms. Juliana Vorgiani-Gaiga, 61 Boatswain's Way, Chelsea, for a new three-year term. For appointment to the cultural council, Ms. Catherine Cabral, 56 Carrot Street, Chelsea, to fill the unexpired term of Elisa Erickson, who has resigned. For reappointment to the Chelsea Housing Authority, Mr. Tony Hernandez, 3 County Road, Chelsea, for a new five-year term. For reappointment to the Licensing Commission, Ms. Gladys Vega, 116 Clark Ave, Chelsea, for a new three-year term. For appointment to the Community Preservation Act Committee, Mr. Jonathan Gomez Pereira, 68 Carroll Street, Chelsea, for a new three-year term. I expect to request your approval of these appointments, resume attached.
Counselor Robinson?
To a second reading, if there are no objections under suspension.
The appointments are moved to a second reading. Moving on to the next communication, we have a communication on outdoor dining.
Dear Counselors, I'm writing to request another minor change to the outdoor dining ordinance to try to make this opportunity easier and more efficient for the city's restaurants. As you know, one means by which we are trying to improve the economic prospects of our restaurant sector is to assist with outdoor dining, especially as some customers remain hesitant about indoor seating. During the course of discussions with operators, one concern consistently raised is the current requirement in our ordinance that no materials be permanently stored on public property. Bringing our materials in and each, in and out each day, as opposed to finding a way to secure them permanently outside, is a barrier for some restaurant owners who otherwise might consider this option. To remedy this problem, I am proposing a relatively modest change to the ordinance to eliminate the prohibition against outdoor storage in any public right-of-way. This would create the opportunity for continual storage or placement of materials like tables, tents and other items on public property, at least during the period of the license for outdoor dining, provided the storage placement location has the prior approval of the Licensing Commission and ISD. This will remove one barrier to participation in outdoor dining. A copy of the proposed ordinance change is attached for the city council's review.
What is the wish of the council?
Communication under suspension, there'll be something coming up on the new business.
Zoning ordinance amendments. Dear Counselors, I am writing to request that the council revisit two of the previous zoning ordinance amendments that they had proposed last year. The changes are the establishment of a mixed-use overlay district in the triangular industrial area north of the new commuter rail station between Market Basket and River Beach Parkway, and the rezoning to retail business of the block of parcels around the abandoned Paulo Compero site to make it identical to the commercial zoning in the rest of this business district. I assure the city council I am not tone deaf to the concerns raised in previous meetings about density, but for the past, for the most part, as I understood the opposition, the concerns focused almost exclusively on density within already constrained residential neighborhoods. To the contrary, these two changes impact commercial areas. Further, based upon the commentary that I heard at the previous public meetings in the informal settings, these two specific zoning changes did not generate widespread concern. They appear to suffer defeat merely because they were packaged with one with the more controversial changes. I am requesting that these two changes be set up for another public hearing and resubmitted to the planning board for recommendation. Under the language of the Economic Development Bill signed by the governor in January of 2021, these two changes will require only a majority vote of the city council.
What is the wish of the council?
Follow communication under suspension. If there are no objections, there'll be something coming up on the new business.
So moved.
Notice of waiver, residency waiver. Dear Counselors, I am writing to notify you of my intention to grant a residency waiver to DPW employee Bianca Nieves, who works in central billing. Ms. Nieves lives with her parents and they have sold their home in Chelsea and relocated in Tewksbury. Thus the need for the waiver. Ms. Nieves is a valued employee in that central billing office and we wish to retain her services. In accordance with the Administrative Code Part 4, Section 1, 12.02, I requested you provide me with any comments on the proposed waiver within seven days.
Suspension, later on, I'm going to be requesting a conference so we can discuss all these waivers that seem to be coming before us with people moving out of the city or we have people here who are looking for employment and also looking to move up in their own community and we're allowing people to leave our community and continue employment. I think we need to have a discussion around that, so we're accepting follow this communication under suspension.
The next communication from the city manager, free cash requests. It's quite lengthy. Do you want me to read the bullet points on all of them?
Waive the reading and just read the bullet heads.
Continuation of Bunker Hill Scholarship Program, $211,750. Continuation of the Senior Transportation Program, $65,000. Continuation of Employee Tuition Program, $50,000. Support for outdoor dining, $75,000. Funds for seasonal beautification workforce, $292,850. Farms demolition work, $200,000. Construction of railroad improvements for the quiet zone, $2,43,500. Additional street light improvement, $200,000. IT technology improvements, $536,970. Amos Hill Water Pump Station retained earnings water, $200,000. Miscellaneous building repairs total, $130,000. DPW streets and sidewalk overtime, $60,000. The total amount of these requests is $4,65,070.
Suspension, there'll be something coming up on the new business. If there are no objections?
Seeing none. Next communication?
We move on. Communications and petitions to the council. We have a copy of a communication received from City Solicitor Cheryl Watson Fisher regarding investigation concerning council member.
What is the wish of the council?
Accept and follow communication. I guess we'll be having a conference at some point.
Request to send this to conference.
And actually, we need to establish some ground rules as to when we do go in executive session, what will be permitted and what won't be permitted.
Okay, the next communication, a copy of a communication received from Chelsea Community Cable Executive Director Paula Batsala.
Real brief, it's the announcing by Chelsea Community Cable that they will now have the ability to have subtitles for viewers who will be watching this on the YouTube channel, so any meetings, actually all of our meetings, city council meetings that are recorded and then replayed on YouTube channel will have the ability to reset with subtitles by the viewer.
Okay, we'll now move on to second readings.
Counselor Brown, got a question?
Accept and file, yes.
Counselor Brown, sorry, on the communication.
Yeah, I wanted to speak. Yeah, I just want, the Chelsea Community Cable Television is just trying to work out with our residents here, not only will you be able to go on YouTube and pick them up, but you'll also be able to capture it in your language, so there's a bunch of languages that they're now trying to make sure that folks, if you really want to listen to the meetings or get into meetings, you'll have your own language subtitles that you can click on and you'll be able to get it translated into your language. So it's another, another opportunity that the city's trying to work with our local agencies here to try to bring this to your house, but also in a language that you can understand. Thank you.
And also, we do have an interpreter that's sitting in the back in the room.
Yes, thank you. I want to recognize that we do have the interpreter in the back. Our next item on the agenda, second reading.
We have under second readings, reappointments to boards and commissions.
I'm going to read over quickly. I'll read over the names and the, this is a second reading, we'll have a roll call vote. The appointments are the following individuals to boards and commissions. For the Board of Trustees, Ms. Lisa Marinicanales. For the Board of Registered Voters, Mr. John J. Connors. For appointment to the council on elder affairs, Mrs. Flor... For appointment to the Council on Elder Affairs, Mrs. Floyd Albert Giraldo. For appointment to Historical Commission, Mr. Alex Aviza. For historical, appointment to the Historical Commission, Joshua Resnick. For the appointment to the Planning Board, Ms. Jessica Aviza. And, yeah, that's the all, so. Do I have a motion for a roll call?
Roll call vote on the adoption, if there are no objections.
Counsel Robinson asked for a roll call vote on the, on the appointments, approval, yes, approval to the appointments to the boards and commission by the City Manager.
Okay, yes, vote would be to adopt all the recommendations. Counsela Vido, Counsel Abisenada?
Yes.
Counsela Recupero? Counsela Garcia?
Yes.
Counsela Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Counsela Robinson?
Yes.
Counsela Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsela Taylor?
Yes.
Counsel Lopez?
Yes.
Counsela Brown?
Yes.
And Counsela Zabat?
Yes.
Ten in favor and none opposed, one absent. The next item under second readings is appropriate, appropriation from the FY 2019 Community Preservation Fund for CPA projects. Motion that the Council act on a report of the Community Preservation Committee on awarding of grant funding to the FY 2021 Community Preservation Projects in accordance with the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, B, Section 53D, and in accordance with the Revised Court of Ordinances. That the Council appropriate the following amounts from the Community Preservation Fund budget to reserve as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for this historic preservation project, $150,000 for Project CP 20-02, Rehabilitation of the City Hall Clock Tower.
What is the will of council?
On the adoption, if there are no objections.
Counsel Robinson asked that we have a roll call vote of the adoption of the $150,000 for the project for rehab using CPA funds. Any discussion? If I may be allowed to from the chair? Again, I just, I'm thrilled to see this come up to the public at home. The City Council is about to vote to approve a transfer of the Community Preservation Funds in the amount of $150,000 for the rehab of the Chelsea, the City Hall Clock Tower. One of the uses of the CPA funds, allowed uses is historic preservation, and I'm thrilled that it's being used to fix our city hall, which many have, many may know that is modeled after Independence Hall in Philadelphia. So the fact that we have this money available, thanks to the people of Chelsea who voted in favor of this, is wonderful, and I don't want the moment to be lost that we have here. So if the clerk may go forward with the roll call.
Counsela Vido, Counsel Abisenada?
Yes.
Counsela Recupero? Counsela Garcia?
Yes.
Counsela Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsela Taylor?
Yes.
Counsel Lopez?
Yes.
Counsela Brown?
Yes.
And Counsela Zabat?
Yes.
Ten in favor and none opposed, one absent. The $126,000 in conference, Leo?
Yep, the assessors, going to move it out from the committee?
Requested by Counsel Robinson?
We now have in front of us, in order that the City Council authorize the appropriation of $126,000 from the overlay surplus account, the Assessor's Department Appraisers Services What is the motion?
If there are no objections.
Would you like to speak on it? May I speak from the chair?
You can speak from the chair.
Thank you. To those of you at home, this $126,000 is an appropriation of the money that we had a meeting on earlier tonight at 6:00 PM, which was to discuss hiring a outside firm to assist the Assessor's Office in evaluating the properties that are for families and greater. This is so that come October, we hopefully have a higher number closer to value that this City Council has been discussing for the last two years, in order that we have a much fairer tax rate. Clerk McCall, roll.
Counsela Vido, absent. Counsel Abisenada?
Yes.
Counsela Recupero?
Yes.
Counsela Garcia?
Yes.
Counsela Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Counsela Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsela Taylor?
Yes.
Counsel Lopez?
Yes.
Counsela Brown?
Yes.
And Counsela Zabat?
Yes.
Ten in favor and none opposed, one absent, motion is adopted. That's it on the second reading.
Okay, moving on to new business?
New business. First order under new business, order introduced by Counsel Robinson, order that the City Manager provide an update about the expenses related to interpreter services.
Counsel Robinson?
Adopted shenanigans under suspension. I'll just be briefly, we did have a, a public hearing a couple weeks ago, and it was mentioned that there weren't any interpreter services that have been here, and it's been going on for this past year that I know of, and I'm just trying to get a count of how much money that we've spent on interpreter services.
Motion to, is it adopted under suspension?
Yes.
Motion to adopt under suspension, seeing no objection.
Next order under new business, order that the City Manager provide an update about the expenses of IT overtime to support the council meetings.
Suspension, if there are no objections. Just to be brief, just trying to get a number as to what it's costing us to provide these services to the community. I know that we're going to be coming into some monies, and I think we need to be very careful about how we're spending our money in order to be able to survive as a community.
Next order?
Next order introduced by Counsel Recupero and Counsel Lopez. Order that the City Manager instruct the Veterans Agent Francisco Torre to help veterans located at the Soldiers' Home with their excise bill through the Veterans Assistance Fund due to their hardship with quarantining the whole year due to COVID-19 pandemic.
I'd like to adopt under suspension, if there's no objection, I'd like to speak on it.
Counsela Recupero asked, does this be accepted under suspension, seeing no objection? You have the floor, sir?
We have a fund that the city, for veterans, and these poor veterans have been quarantined, they haven't been able to go out, so I, I hope that the city, Mr. Francisco Torre, will be able to help these people with paying some of their bills for their cars. Thank you.
Counsel Lopez?
Yes, thank you. As an employee of the Chelsea Soldier Home in Cornwall, Massachusetts, I have noticed that our veterans have been in lockdown, they haven't used their car for a whole year. I think it's fair to help them with their excise taxes, and thank you for, Counsel Recupero, for bringing this up. Thank you.
Can we, can I ask for an opinion from the City Solicitor if this is legal or not?
Through the chair, if our City Solicitor is there and can hear us, there's a question on whether the fund that is, the Veterans Fund here can be used to help pay excise bills for veterans living at the Soldiers' Home. So, City Solicitor Fisher, are you still there?
She can send us a communication on it. I don't think she can give us a direct answer right now.
Okay, we'll allow them to get an opinion later on in response to the City Council.
The next item under new business, order that the City Manager look into building a parking garage for the residents of Chelsea, introduced by Counsel Recupero.
Counsel Recupero?
I'd like to adopt under suspension, I'd like to speak about it.
You may.
For many years, I've been looking for the city to do this. This is a good thing. I believe that this city at about this time needs a parking garage. For one, it will benefit the businesses. You want businesses to grow on Broadway, but there's no way to park, so the city has to have some place where these people can go and park, and not only them, and the people of the city itself. I believe that this could be funded through many ways. It could be funded through Chapter 90 money, it could be funded through grants, it could be funded, and you could also charge the people themselves who want to park. In the long run, it's a beneficial thing to have a parking garage within our city. Many, many cities have parking garage. This city has grown, it's grown, they're always saying it needs to grow, and it's growing. But if you don't put a parking garage, what are you going to do with all these cars? They come to a city and want to do business, especially in the Broadway area. It's a good thing, it could fund itself through the years, it will pay for itself. I would like the City Manager to come up and at least explain if it's feasible to do such a thing. What is his opinion about it now?
He'll respond. Next order?
Next order.
Wait, 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 wait. Sorry, I apologize, I have some hands raised. Counsel Taylor and then Counsel Lopez.
So, just real quick on this, on this order put forth by Mr. Recupero, I also think that a parking garage is a necessary thing, but it needs to be implemented within a comprehensive parking reform plan that we should be working on. Parking is one of the biggest problems in Chelsea, and we need to solve this, but there's too many cars and not enough space. So I understand that we are in a financial bind, a little bit less than we were a week or so ago, but we should still start looking into the possibility of, of what it would take to try to implement a plan like this, so that we can have much-needed relief for our residents in the parking situation. Thank you.
Counsel Lopez?
Thank you, Counsel Recupero, for bringing this up. About two, three years ago, I put in order, same thing, about, you know, how can we try to get a parking garage in our city? The answer was, it's not feasible to do it, but every year and every year, we have a lot of cars, and there's not enough parking. I think it is time to look to see if we can build a garage, like Counsel Recupero said, there's grants, there's different kind of money around, and we can look into this, because we really need a parking garage in the city. Thank you.
Next order?
Next order introduced by Counsel Recupero, order that the City Manager look into doing its own trash collector, the city doing it.
Counsel Recupero?
I'd like to adopt under suspension, if there's no objection, I'd like to speak about it.
You have the floor, seeing no objection?
I, a couple of years ago, we had this conversation again about the city being able to have the trash collection, and one of the answers is, years ago, they used to have trash collection, the city itself. We pay for trash, and right now, it seems like there's a lot of companies that the city can hire to do so, and I was just wondering if the city can look into it and see if it's maybe feasible for us to do so, if it's cost-effective for us to pick up our own trash, or if it's to leave it alone the way it is, but I believe that maybe it would be a good thing for us to pick up our own trash, because the way recycling is now, they charging you twice as much for recycling. So if we pick up our own trash, we can recycle, and it's, and it will be more cost-efficient to us now. Maybe it wasn't before because the recycling wasn't costing as much, but as you go about it now, the recycling is twice as much, and maybe you should look into it, and I will kind of be curious to see. If you could give me some figures and numbers, what it costs, not only for the trash, for the recycling, and what it would cost us, and what it costs us to have it the way we have it now. Thank you.
Next order? I'm sorry, Counsel Robinson?
Just, just like, I know the City Manager will put some numbers together for us, somebody who has experience in, in the trash collection business, this is a pretty big nut to take on, as the city would be looking at purchasing three new vehicles, hiring X amount of men, and picking up all the dumping fees to go along with that, so we're looking at a pretty high number. I'd like to see what the City Manager is going to come backward to show us if it's feasible or not. In my opinion, I don't think that it is, but I'll wait to hear from the City Manager on what his analysis is.
Counsel Lopez?
Also, I put in for this order a while ago, about two years maybe, the, the city looking to buy our own trash trucks and pick up our own trash collection on the city, and they were saying that it was too high, too much money, and we need to hire more people for DPW, but, you know, we paying a lot of money for these companies, these contractors, and, and really, some of them, sometimes they don't do the job right, so I think it's time to look into, try to get this, you know, if we can collect our own trash. Thank you.
Counsel Brown?
Anything, but a lot of these orders that was coming up, we're asking the City Manager to look into what we can do. I mean, we have subcommittees on all of these orders, we have subcommittees on public work, which follows under this order, we have them under finance, we can actually have subcommittees, we can have thorough conversation about what we have, what we'd like to see, what numbers, and then we can have these conversations. Just to throw them on the floor and ask the City Manager, I believe it's unfair, I think we should be asking a lot of the stuff to go to committees, and we do our research and then come back and invite the City Managers and other experts with this, and have, get a thorough understanding of what we are trying to jump into. Thank you.
Next order?
Next order introduced by Counsel Lopez. Order that the City Manager instruct DPW Director or any other city department to collaborate with the construction agencies throughout the city to provide drivers proper advance notice of which street signage that is placed well before the work zone area, at least two or three blocks before construction site. In addition, construction projects that alter normal traffic should be announced on the city's website and social media platforms to provide drivers and residents with the latest information. Overall, this will help and support drivers readjust their route and allow better traffic control.
Counsel Lopez?
I would like to adopt under suspension, if there's no objection, I would like to speak on it.
You have the floor?
Yes, I've been seeing construction all over the city, everywhere, and, and every time you try to go one street, it's blocked, you go to the next one, it's blocked, so what we're trying to do is, we do a lot of work, but we have to inform the, the community, we have to inform our, our people that are, what street is going to be closed today, because sometimes they, they close so many, there's people going around and around and going nowhere. I think we have to do better than this. The contractor or the agency who do construction, and also whoever's in charge to see, to oversee these people. It's, you know, it's really crazy that we don't think about our people.
Counsel Recupero?
I'd like to commend my fellow counsel for putting this. He has the right thing. Now, too long ago, if you go down with Park Street where Roker is, there was nothing there, they closed the whole street, people that had, that lived around that area had to be diverted to another section, but nobody even knew that that happened, and it happens in all over the city.
Rose Lane Colwell has joined the meeting.
Go ahead.
Can I continue?
Continue.
That happened all over the city. It happened also up on the top of the hill, on Highland, if you went down, they never had a sign to tell you not to go down, and that's a one-way street going down, you can't go back up once you go down. So I believe that the people themselves should be notified, and they're going to do work within that street or within that area, they should have a couple of days in advance to post signs and say, "Street work is going to happen in this section, and you shouldn't find an alternative way," but at least they should get warning, because a lot of times they don't get warning. They just come, they dig up, and people can't go to where they're going. I believe that there should be, like fellow counsel said, advance notice. It's, it should, it doesn't make it, it should be done, because you don't want to make the people pay for something that they shouldn't have to pay. Thank you.
Counsel Brown?
This is the order that I'm providing this week. This order is something that's very well thought out, this order is something that's needed. We need to really take a look at what's going on here, all over the city, we're doing work, we have any contractors out here, but there's no notification to the people. Folks are getting up, going to work, they come down Broadway, and there's, oh, construction site, there's no detour, you have to find out where you can go to get You have to find out where you can go to get around. School just opened, you got buses, you got crossing guards out. Everyone is kinda discombobulated, looking, oh, how do I prevent myself from having an accident? I think it's very, very important that we start using the technology that we have to inform our people that, you know, on Broadway, two days, a day, at least a minimum of a day, or two days is possible, to let them know that there'll be a detour. You see it going down Central Ave, you see it right in front of, um, uh, Park Street. You see it right where they're talking about in Roker. You come down, you go down Arlington Street, you go halfway down, you have to turn around because they're working on Sixth and Herb and, um, Sixth Street and Herb in Arlington. So you have to turn around, there's no consideration for the residents. And this is where the anger comes up on the council, this is where the anger come up from the residents, because if we inform them, at least they know in the morning, I need 15 more minutes to get from A to B. Um, I need 15 more minutes to get from Broadway to Second Street. And sometime it takes that amount of time to go on. Not to mention the traffic that's going up on Route One because of the silver line and the commuter rail, and the streets are getting narrow and narrow. We don't have a lot of, we don't have a lot of room to maneuver around. And I think we should really consider, as we go forward with these contractors, to make them responsible to put something up to let folks know. Uh, we had, uh, uh, two years ago, we did a filming, which we thought was really good, down at Lower Broadway. The next thing you knew, it blew up in front of us, because they were down here, they had all of places blocked off. Residents couldn't get back home. The only thing residents were saying is, "If you would've let me know, I wouldn't have been so mad and so ticked off." So the only thing we have to do is let them know, we got the signage out here, we got the technology, we got the 911, uh, the reverse calling. Let folks know that something is going on, so when they get out to take their kids to school, they don't have to turn on Second Street and go up another area to try to get the pass bill, or they can't come down Washington Ave because they can't get passed Broadway. So I think we owe them, I think we owe them that. Thank you.
Next order?
Next order introduced by Counsel Lopez. I'd like the city manager to instruct ISD director and DPW director or any other agency that whose dumpster permits to provide the city council a list of how many dumpsters there are in the city, and in addition, how frequent are these dumpsters emptied, and who is in charge of the cleaning of said dumpsters?
Counsel Lopez.
Adopted under suspension, uh, would like to speak on it too.
You have the floor?
Yes, uh, lately, I've been having, uh, phone calls about dumpsters. These dumpsters have been overflowing with trash all over, not all on top, and on the ground. And, um, the reason I put this is because, uh, we had a, we have a, a problem with rats. And trash on the ground, it makes it worse, because the, the rat coming to eat, uh, these trash bags. Um, I wanna know, how many dumpsters do we have? Who is allowing these permits? Are they following? Who's checking on these dumpsters? Sometimes these dumpsters don't get picked up, maybe once a week, it needs probably two, three times a week, they need to pick up. And, uh, yeah, it's really, we, we need to do something about this, because it, it's too much trash in the street. We complain about trash, we complain about rats, we complain about everything, uh, someone's not following up these dumpsters, how, how, how many times they're being picked up? Thank you.
Counsel Recupero.
It's true, a lot of times, these dumpsters stay in an area for a week, two weeks at a time. And we actually don't know how many there is. One time, they even gave a dumpster to a trailer that was hooked up in back of a car, and they were throwing trash in the back of the dumpster, uh, back of a, of a trailer, which was supposed to be for a dumpster. I don't know, but that happened once, 'cause they called me and I found out, and they had it in back of a trailer. But the thing is, how many do we actually have all over the city? And what is the amount of time that they can stay? What is it, one week, two weeks, three weeks? When do they pick them up? Do they pick them up every couple of days? And that's what we need to know. We need to know how long they stay and when they pick them up. Thank you.
Seeing no other questions or comments, we'll move on to the next.
We have all the money requests that I have just previously read from the city manager on his communication.
Can you read off the ID numbers so that everyone is aware what number we're going from?
Okay, we're going from 12H to 12U, as listed on the agenda. All of these monies have been read, uh, previously by me, from the city manager's requests.
12H, so, uh, I just wanna make sure, do we do the by ID numbers also or not by the agenda? There's also ID number here, should I read off by that?
No.
No? Okay.
No. It's 12, 12AB, you know, whatever it is. 12H to 12U.
Okay.
Uh, second readings, Senator Leo?
Yeah, if, um, there are no objections, I'd ask for all the money orders to be moved to a second reading. Um, it was read at the beginning of the meeting as to what the numbers are, and if anybody has any questions, they're, they're here for anybody to look at. But they are all being moved to a second reading, if there are no.
Congress, Congress, Counsel, are you, are you planning to have a, uh, subcommittee meeting prior to, with the Finance Committee? To have one before next meeting?
I would ask, if anybody has any questions, I will request a conference, but if nobody has any questions, I don't wanna waste people's time by ha- having people, um, come to the meeting.
Counsel Brown.
I actually don't think it's worth the time when you're talking about spending this kind of money. I think some of these things are over, some of these things are something we've done in the past, um, grants and different programs that we've done in the past. Some of them are very new for the first time, and they're, um, they're asking for, um, some money that we should get some understanding, what's gonna happen to this money, and how this money gonna be dispersed, and, you know, what we're getting. So I think it's very important that we do have a conference on this.
I have a vote for meeting on conference, so that all members would have to be at the meeting if they have any questions.
And the city manager.
And the city manager would also.
Okay, so we're moving all the, um, new money requests today to a second reading per, uh, rules and regulations, and also, we were scheduling a subcommittee meeting, uh, of the Subcommittee on Finance, to invite any interested counselors and also city managers to go over these requests.
By Counsel Officer Nada, Counselor Garcia. We raise that Chelsea City Council has authority to adopt ordinances to protect the health, safety, and welfare of all residents of the city of Chelsea. We raise in an effort to help stimulate the small business economy impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic, the city of Chelsea wishes to enhance outdoor dining services for restaurants by allowing such restaurants to store items outside in the public way to make such services more efficient. Now therefore be it ordained that the revised Code of Ordinances of the city of Chelsea as amended be further amended as follows, in ordinance revising Part Two, Chapter Fourteen, Section Fourteen dash ninety-one of the Chelsea Code of Ordinances. Amendment Number One, that Chapter Fourteen, Section Four dash ninety-one of the Code of Ordinances, city of Chelsea, Massachusetts, is hereby amended by striking the last sentence of subsection E two and replacing with the following, stacking and storing of any outdoor cafe and dining area elements in the public right-of-way shall only be allowed and expressly approved by the Licensing Commission after consultation with the ISD. Amendment Two, that Chapter Fourteen, Section Fourteen dash ninety-one of the Code of Ordinances, city of Chelsea, Massachusetts, is hereby amended by striking subsection F and two and recording the remain, reordering the remaining subsections as F two and F three. These changes shall take effect immediately.
Counselor Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. President. I asked for a roll call vote on the adoption, and I wish to speak on it.
Um, this has to go to two readings, actually.
It does not. I checked in with Sheriff Solicitor. So through the chair, if you wanna go through the city solicitor, does this require a second reading?
I'm getting a different, uh...
Through the chair, to the city solicitor, does this require a second adopt, if this, does this require a second reading?
So, um, so city solicitor, Cheryl Ann Watson, can you, um...
The charter only requires...
Whether or not this needs a second reading, because this, our, our clerk is telling us otherwise.
Well, if you read the charter, uh, loan appropriations and appropriations are required two readings automatically in the charter. Well, ordinances do not require actually two readings. We end up doing it because we usually send them to subcommittee.
Hold on one second.
Except for zoning ordinances.
All ordinances under special rules require two readings.
Our rules, our rules, our own city rules dictate that, uh, that we adopt it and go by under, state that, uh...
Oh, you mean the council rules? I'm sorry, Judith, I, I don't review those all the time.
These are council rules.
So basically, okay, so I, I, I strike my original motion. Thank you, city solicitor, for clarifying that. Um, I strike my original motion, let's move it to a second reading. And if my council colleagues require a subcommittee on conference, I'm happy to move to that as well.
No, we'll, uh, we'll wait to the next committee. It's, uh, do you have any time to, um, read this? I think it's very simple, if you have any questions, either ask the city manager, or myself, or, uh, Vice President Counsel Garcia on the matter.
And now I wish to speak on it, Counselor.
Counselor Garcia, you have the floor.
Thank you. So to all my colleagues, I'd like to first of all extend, uh, a huge thank you to city manager, staff member Lourdes, and also our director of community development and housing at City Hall, Alex Bane. Both of them were extremely supportive in going out personally to visit a lot of these businesses on a listening tour, where we took the opportunity to meet one-on-one with many of these businesses to just hear some of these struggles, and where are some of the areas where you can really fill in the gaps. Uh, again, you know, this pandemic caught all of us by surprise, and tried to do the best, but not only as council, but also the staff at City Hall tried to do the best, but to really accommodate with this dire time. And, you know, we got the feedback, we know, and I guess I can speak on behalf of this council as well, that we try to learn, um, what happened last year and... So this year, there is some urgency to get this done. Spring is already here, summer is around corner. So being able to provide this sort of assistance to our businesses, crucial, especially because many of these restaurants rely heavily on outdoor seating. We know that there are many customers who would prefer to sit outdoors as opposed to indoors because of COVID. And we know that we're seeing a light at the end of the tunnel with this vaccination, but we still need to take caution. So being able to accommodate some of these requests that are coming directly from your constituents, directly to small businesses, I really hope many of you vote in favor, um, when the time is right. So I, I hope that when we move this to a second reading, all of you guys have enough time to, to really reach out to some of these restaurants and listen to what they have to say, because this is top, top of their list. Thank you.
There's no objection if I can speak from the chair? Um, I wanna echo some of what, um, Vice President Counsel Garcia said about, uh, the work by Alex. Um, this, um, was actually something I talked to Alex, um, going into this year, but from years past. This is actually something of an issue in my eyes and experience as a, as a, um, cafe owner, um, pre-COVID. As someone who participated early on, if many of you know, on the whole initiative of doing sidewalk cafes from three years ago. And one of my complaints, from years ago, why I didn't participate in the second year, was because I explained to them how much of a hassle it was, the first year of taking those tables out, taking, doing the insurance policies, and then every night having to drag those tables in. And I was only dealing with two or three tables. Nothing in comparison to what we tried to push last year in the downtown area. Say, for example, Missalvado that had five tables, or, uh, Chelsea Station has all those tables outside. Um, if you know, if you had to deal with this, the time of staff that it takes to take those tables in, take them out, and repeat. Um, whereas in Boston and other communities, they just allow the owners to simply get a, uh, a chain or a wire link around all those, uh, chairs and tables at nighttime so that they are secured, and then not an issue that we're concerned before. So I appreciate that, um, Alex Train, um, you know, is taking the feedback from, uh, an owner such as myself and all those others, um, who have restaurants downtown area. And now we're putting this in front of them, and hopefully, they'll take advantage of it. I think more participants will be in there, knowing that they won't have to do all the setup time and, and takedown time. But, uh, I look forward to discussing this, um, in a couple of weeks. And if, again, if any of my colleagues have any questions about this, feel free to give myself or Counselor Garcia, or even Alex Train, um, a ring about it. Moving on?
Next order introduced by Counsel, uh, Officer Nada. Now therefore be it ordained that the revised Code of Ordinances of the city of Chelsea as amended be further amended and adopted as follows, in ordinance revising Part Two, Chapter Thirty-four of the Chelsea Code of Ordinances to add the following zoning provisions. Amendment One. The Chapter Thirty-four, Article Eight, Special Districts be amended by adding a new section, Thirty-four dash one eighty-seven, that reads as followed, "Mixed-use overlay district." Scope and purpose this section applies to the mixed-use overlay district. It is the purpose of the section to establish a mixed-use overlay district to foster and promote increased multifamily housing development adjacent to the new Chelsea commuter rail station and the terminus of Silver Line. Other objectives include promote public health, safety, and welfare by encouraging diversity of housing.
Chair recognizes Counsel Officer Nada.
Um, motion to refer this to the planning board, and also to set up a...
Public hearing.
Public hearing at a time when we may hear back from the planning board once they've made a recommendation, and if I may speak on this.
And a conference also.
And a conference.
And a conference.
And a conference.
A conference also.
On a conference.
You can speak on the matter, you have the floor, Counselor.
Thank you, Counsel Robinson. Um, you know, I have a lot to say about this, for so many reasons. More so because of the large packet that we just received tonight with all of those expenditures that we are sending, free cash expenditures. And unfortunately, I wasn't here physically to, um, help support my colleague Robinson when he asked for a reconsideration to try to deal with what is now again being sent and for another, maybe three, six-month period of time. We don't know when it's gonna come back. But in that failure of reconsideration, what I asked my colleagues to understand is what they voted for. First, when they voted no on the mixed overlay. And two, what they didn't allow when this reconsideration was brought up. Many of you may not know that the whole purpose of the guide was to allow the mixed overlay, was to salvage the lost revenue that we're about to have, property taxes, when they tear down Stop &amp; Shop. Maybe you know, maybe you don't know. I make it a point to know. They're tearing down Stop &amp; Shop, and they've already talked to the, and if you don't know, half of that, or majority of that lot is on the Everett side. Thanks to the pressure put on by Jay Ash during his administration, they built most of the building on the Chelsea side, and as a result of getting not the parking lot, we got the taxes. Now, the new owners who plan on tearing this all down are gonna tear it down, and they have a much friendlier zoning on the Everett side for residential. And the only way we were going to salvage all that lost tax revenue was that the city manager and his staff decided, "Look, why don't we match what Everett's doing? That way, we can keep the taxes here." And what ended up happening, in addition, the benefit for all you housing advocates, affordable housing advocates, is that our side actually has inclusion... affordable housing advocates, is that our side actually has inclusionary zoning. Everett does not. Everett doesn't have the inclusionary zoning that we have. And in this particular density, this overlay district, there's a bonus, a higher call for more affordable apartments if they go for a higher number. So the more you build, the higher the rate of affordability rates is, basically more apartments. And I tried to stress this when we were discussing how many apartments that we were looking at, close to one hundred and forty-five, affordable apartments. But this council voted no. No to affordable housing, and more importantly, no to all those tax dollars. Because as a result of this no, they will go forward, when they tear down Stop &amp; Shop, they're going to build everything on the Everett side, and we lost those tax dollars. I don't know if there's enough time to salvage it, I can't say it, but developers do what they do, and they have to, they have to build when the rates, the mortgage rates and the lending rates are as low as possible, and there's a frenzy going on, highs and peaks and lows of everything. And right now, who knows whether or not they're going to wait for us to get it on our side. So this is why I'm pushing it again. Because when I get a packet from the city manager of all these expenditures, whether it's for the beautification, whether it's for the scholarships for our, our seniors so they can go to get two years, an associate's degree at Bunka Hill, and you say no to a mixed overlay, you got to come back to saying like, connect the dots, as I stated a few weeks ago, connect the dots. You want to say no to that? Great, then don't come to me asking for money for all these other things that we want to spend on, because you need property taxes, and you can't keep on going to the same homeowners with the two and a half over and over again and keep on making it harder and harder. Again, it's all interconnected. Another, another employee today, it does, is leaving the city? I mean, I don't think a meeting goes by anymore that we don't have some waiver anymore, a residency waiver. And I didn't, I noticed in here that my communication from last meeting isn't in here because it was late. First of all, again, I'm sorry I wasn't here, because it was a mistake for that email to be considered a communication. It wasn't a communication. What I had expected was that we were going to have a debate, a discussion about all those items on the reconsideration. And I had information, and I wanted my colleagues to have the information that I was going to speak about, a handout. When we have subcommittees from staff or whatever, we have handouts all the time, and they're not considered communications. So it was a mistake to libel that, and even more insulting to say, by the way, I don't even want to look at it. You don't want to look at facts? You don't want to look at information that would help you maybe decide about whether or not we should talk about density? Let me tell the audience what my colleague said no to. It said, I found that in our database, our tax assesses database, there's over a thousand properties, a thousand properties that have multifamilies on four thousand square feet lots, twos, threes, and fours. The city manager said he wanted to do it on the five thousand, no, six thousand, this is six thousand. In other words, his position wasn't anything that we haven't done before, or rather, in the history of Chelsea. Chelsea has a history of creating what he wanted on smaller lots. That's all I wanted to say, said, hey, look, someone's going around saying, we're introducing something different. We're destroying Chelsea. No, we're not. We've had this all this time. You talk about development, in that information, you would have seen how many times in the history of Chelsea, a father would have a single-family house or a two-family house, they subdivided it so they can build a house for their daughter in the backyard. There's plenty of properties, I'll show you, because I've had to walk those properties as a realtor and as a candidate for office, I've knocked on doors. We have those properties already done, that density. We weren't introducing anything radical, such as what the city manager was saying. There was nothing radical about what we were doing. Townhouses? Go to Willow Park on Congress, go to Admiral Hill, go to Prattville, you will see townhouses built on lots smaller than, what, a thousand square feet? Nothing new? But it seemed that the, my colleague, my former colleague comes up here saying, we're doing something completely new, and we're changing the face. You know, when someone comes up here and talks about, and I hate to put her on the spot, but when my former colleague comes up here and says that, you know, she has a nice single-family home, and she has a yard, and isn't it great that her kids could play in the back? Yeah. But what she's not talking about is that when I helped her buy that home almost ten, twelve years ago, today she could not afford that home in Chelsea. Today, that home, that single family with a nice yard, is unattainable for ninety percent of the people living in Chelsea. So you are presenting something of an economic injustice. There's no scenario, single families now in Chelsea are going five fifty, and by saying no to density, you think you're helping? You're not helping, you're being irresponsible to our colleagues, to our residents, rather, who want to live here. You're not creating the opportunities. And all of those homes that I just talked about, the splits, the two thousand, the multifamilies and such, today, those are the most affordable homes available. The density that they approved fifty years ago, today are the most affordable options for our families. You want to talk about thinking forward, thinking the long game? Yeah, I'm thinking the long game. That's what happens. And also in that packet, there was a lot there, also in that packet, I described what they're not saying, our housing advocates. We built so many apartments, and what was the argument? If we build volume, if we build supply, the value will come down. In that packet, there were within a five, ten-mile radius of Chelsea, two hundred and seventy-eight listings that I can have access to, this doesn't include all the private ones, not all the apartments, are now available for under eighteen hundred dollars, two and three bedrooms, underavailable. Why? Because we spent eight years, the whole general region spent years of building that supply, and all the rents have dropped down. No one can argue that the rents have not come down. Why? Because we built supply. However, there's only two, three houses available on the same category. If you have, if you're pre-approved for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the greater Boston area, maybe you get three houses? So where should we be spending or practicing or focusing on? On the apartments or on the homes? There's only two options, as pointed again and again and again, where they're going. Don't come to me and argue about residency requirements when you don't want to try to build homes for our residents. Don't. Because not everybody wants to rent, and we've built enough rentals. I've said it before, I'll say it again. It was a mistake. It was a mistake what happened. Thank you.
Counselor on the order. Seeing none, we'll move to the next order of business.
It reads, whereas it is expressed purpose of municipal zoning to promote the health, safety, and general welfare of the inhabitants of the city of Chelsea, whereas a specific objective of the city of Chelsea zoning ordinance states the need to encourage the most appropriate use of land throughout the city of Chelsea. Whereas the city of Chelsea, after due notice, public hearing, and deliberation, finds that the amendment of Chapter Thirty-four advances amendments that are legitimate aspects of the public interest.
I'll ask the chair with a similar order, which was kind of read, and I'll call on Counselor Cooper at this time.
Withdraw this order.
And at this time, Counselor Cooper would like to withdraw his order. Seeing no objections to that, the order is withdrawn.
That's how you have.
Seeing, right now, there are no other orders. Are there any public announcements? Counselor Lopez?
Yes, I just want to say to the people of Chelsea, I have seen a lot of people going into convenience stores without masks. Actually, I asked two people last night why they were at the store without a mask, and they didn't say nothing, but the pandemic is still, you know, even though we, some people got vaccinated, we have to be careful. We have to care for other people, for our family, for our friends, for our neighbors. And I would like to see people be a little more, 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 and using the mask, because it's really dangerous. I was a COVID nineteen, I was very sick, and, and I can tell you, I don't want, and I don't wish anybody to have this. And so I hope, you know, the ISD or whoever's in charge to go to these convenience stores, visit them, because sometimes you're going to find people without a mask, and talk to that person, and talk to the convenience store owner, because some people are not using their mask. Thank you.
Counselor Evergina.
Before we get to the moment of silence, just want to wish a belated happy birthday to Counselor Robinson.
Thank you. Any moments of silence? Counselor Evergina.
Mary Nolan, who was the sister of our former mayor Tommy Nolan, and a longtime Chelsea resident, passed away recently, and I wanted to make sure that she was recognized, given some moment.
Also, longtime Chelsea resident Ralph Kalil, who passed, and also I'd like to recognize the fact that the Capitol Police Officer was killed over the weekend also. Okay, seeing no further business before this council, we are adjourned.